We're going to go ahead and bring this meeting to order. Thank you for coming tonight. We're first going to have the invocation by Assistant City Manager Tom Bachman, and our pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Fred Sykes. Please rise.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to live in this country of opportunity and democracy. We ask that you provide guidance and wisdom to our leaders to make the difficult decisions they must make for our well-being. Give us all in our conduct and action, guide us all in our conduct and actions, and forgive us when we fall short of your expectations. May all honor and glory be yours forever. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge to the flag of our nation. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Row call, please.
Mayor Chairman Tui.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Vice Chairman Lane. Commissioner, Councilmember Herford.
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Sanderson.
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Sykes.
Here.
And Mayor Pro Tem Lane Phoenis, I don't believe will be able to make it in time for this meeting tonight, so she, I believe, will be absent. Report out of closed session, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. The records should reflect the City Council convened for closed session with three of the members present. That was Mayor Tui, Councilmember Herford, and Councilmember Sykes. That prior to recessing into closed session, the items that were listed on the agenda were announced for discussion in closed session, and the following is my report. The items under conference with labor negotiators, the various employee organizations, and miscellaneous unrepresented management employees were discussed with the City Council. There was no action taken, however, with respect to those employee groups or employees, and there's nothing further to report. One item was discussed under conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9 subdivision C. And on that matter, the City Council unanimously authorized the city to prepare and file a lawsuit against Inmate Communications Corporation. That item was approved unanimously by the three members that were present in closed session. That concludes my report. It's appropriate to continue with the open portion of the meeting.
Mr. Assistant City Manager, do we have changes to the council meeting agenda?
Yes, and we would request that we... Excuse me, we would request that item number nine, cost-saving opportunities, be held over until Monday, the 13th, with that budget meeting.
For our budget meeting?
With the budget meeting on the 13th.
And that is, I believe, Councilmember Herford's item?
That's correct.
Is that okay with you, Councilmember?
That is, yes.
Okay. Do we need a motion or anything, or since it's his request and his item?
That's fine.
That will be held over to our meeting on Monday for our full budget meeting? We drop now?
I want to make a correction, because I don't want us to call it our budget meeting. Basically, our redevelopment budget-elimination meeting.
Yes. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to... Yeah, that is correct. Drop down to AQMD presentations. Can we have the one and the only, the famous mayor and councilmember from the city of South Pasadena, Mike Cacciari? Please step forward.
Thank you, Mayor Tui. Councilmembers.
Is it on?
Yeah.
Can you guys hear him out there? Go ahead, Mike.
Testing.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. Ready?
We've got about a five-minute presentation. Mr. Tui might go a little longer. If you want to cut me off, it's fine. I'm the governing board member representing eastern San Gabriel Valley, from Claremont all the way to Santa Clarita on the south coast air quality management district. Here's the district, the four-county region, LA, Orange, San Bernardino, Riverside County. What's important, there's a lot of gasoline vehicles and a lot of, unfortunately, polluting diesel vehicles in that four counties. Go on. We did a film last year called "The Right to Breathe." It's about a 20-minute film. It's an exciting documentary showing the harmful effects of vehicle emissions on people. We'll show you a little clip from it. You can show it at your optimist rotary club, Kiwanis Club, chamber.
Southern California's air today is actually the worst in the nation.
Children are getting sick as a result of exposures to air pollution that are occurring right now.
This pollution of our air is a form of a crime. Okay? It's an invisible crime to us.
I don't want to grow up in a world that the air we breathe is toxic. I don't want my children or my grandchildren to grow up in that type of world.
If you grow up around here, you're used to smoggy days, and you might not necessarily realize it shouldn't be like this.
It's really a human rights issue. More than we need shelter, we need clean air.
I think we have the same right that everybody else, the right to breathe.
So this documentary is in your packet, and then you can, again, take it any time when... The good news in southern California is air quality hasn't improved. What the south coast does regulate are stationary sources like gas stations, factories, dry cleaners. Unfortunately, the bad news is we do have the worst air quality in the nation, and the two big things, O3 is ozone and PM2.5 is particulate matter, which comes from diesel. Here's a problem. This is the health impacts of vehicle emissions on your body. Premature mortality has been defined, asthma, cardiovascular disease, and cancer. As you inhale, it goes all throughout your circulatory system. Thanks. And here's a challenge we face. The cars, the trucks, the ships, the trains, the aircrafts you see right there, we don't control. The federal government does, and CARB. That's where probably 80, 90 percent of the pollution comes. Here's the challenges we face. If we don't meet these attainment goals by reducing pollution by these years for fine particulate matter, that's the diesel up top, and ozone, we could lose federal funding for everything. Go on. This is one, I really want to emphasize this, that gray kind of half-circle right there, that's the diameter of your human hair. That gold ball in there is called particulate matter 10. That's what you inhale a lot, some of the diesel. The smaller gold ball now, from the yellow, is PM2.5. It's even smaller. It's something we didn't know about 10 years ago, that really small one, ultrafine, is one billionth the size of that, your human hair. That's called ultrafine particulates. And unfortunately, we'll tell you what it does. Go on. You inhale it, goes into your organs, all throughout your respiratory system. Go on. And here's what it's more toxic than the 2.5 we just found out to doctors recently. And they can actually cross your cell membranes, break through your cell membranes, and lodge in your lungs and all your organs. Go on. Good news. Here's some funding we have available that your cities actually, in your school district, is taking advantage of. These are all the different programs we have at AQMD, and you can work with myself or Deborah to, again, avail yourself of this. Go on. Here's the money you pay for your CARB registration. AQMD gets a portion of it. The Mobile Source Air Pollution Reduction Committee gets some, local government. These are a lot of our programs called the Carl Moyer for Goods Movement on the Right, construction equipment in the left and middle. A VIP program we have. Go on. Surplus Off-Road, again, high-polluting construction equipment. And again, there's deadlines for companies in your city to apply for this. Go through these fast. We're spending nearly a billion dollars in converting all these diesel trucks you see over to compressed natural gas or putting particulate matter on them. Go on. This is a program you will talk about in a minute, but we were giving away actually almost $200 million in the last 20 years just to convert those diesel school buses to compressed natural gas. A lower emission similar program, there it is, at $200 million to date. Go on. Here's the exciting program you've been waiting for. I know the mayor's been waiting for. Steve, you've got any old polluting lawnmowers at home that are gassed? You know, the oil you got to put in, and the gas is smelling, you got to pull that cord. Mayor, do you have one at home?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well...
I don't operate it. My son does, but...
Well, we give your son an opportunity to do something. You don't have to pull that cord anymore or go buy gas in a can. It leaks all over. We've got a program. It'll be here back in June. We move it throughout the area. If you want one in your city, let us know. We can get one over here. I don't know if you've had one in the past.
Yes, we just recently had one.
You know, actually, I did. I worked with your city and also Covina. Mr. Councilmember Templeton, we got it at church right in the boundary. I was there that day. Okay, so we did one in your city last year. And what you do is, go back once, you take your old polluting lawnmower, take it down. They take it, they throw it away, and you get one of five models. Three black and decker, that's called a Newton right there. For $100 or $200, it's a state-of-the-art $600 lawnmower. Let me just show you very quickly what it does. It's very quiet. Mayor, the knife before it. Just take this battery, charge it up. It's not very heavy. And it almost, you plug the key in.
I have no idea.
All you have to do is, there's nothing to pull, there's no oil, no gas, no pollution. Push a little foot in here. The blade's actually under moving, and that's... Take this off if it doesn't go on. No pollution between $100 and $200 are self-propelled. You pick your choice. That'll be, again, next summer if any of your constituents want it, or your son. Next one? We've also got a program for healthy hearts. If you want to, you know, you've got a wood-burning fireplace, a lot of pollution in that. We'll give you $200 to change over to, you know, natural gas logs. And we've got a great program, some great vendors out there. This is the Leapover Exchange. How many times on a Saturday morning you wake up in that loud noise? We've got one for professional gardeners that's about 50 to 60 percent quieter, pollutes about 60 percent less, and they get about a $250 subsidy. Next. More funding opportunities, go here or talk to Deborah or myself. Mr. Mayor, we've got an offer for you. You can't refuse. This is an offer we make to the cities, and actually, three or four are going to avail themselves. What we did was, we took a police vehicle, and if the police officers are here, we took the standard Ford CVPI, Crown Victoria Police Intercepted Vehicle. We converted a couple to compressed natural gas, and we took them to the sheriff's testing place at Fontana Racetrack just last, about a year and a half ago, in October, and we tested it. We took the V6, V8, pursued braking acceleration, passed with flying colors. We're having two converted right now. They're up in San Francisco. We bought from Texas, 2010, 2011 model. All we ask, if you want to use it, you get it free for three to six months, free. Run it, patrol it, beat it up, work it in. All we want to know is how your results were. So we're going to have several going around in a bunch of our cities. You can sign up with us, let us know, and it saves you a lot of money. And see, compressed natural gas is about half the price of regular gas. Go on. What's happening in the future with electric vehicle infrastructure? This was the old infrastructure that was set up. They're now obsolete. And these are all the cars that are coming out. I've got one in the parking lot around the top-left is the Nissan Leaf. It says 100 miles, but probably goes really 75 to 80 miles, depending how fast you go. And what I did was, you can come to your house, and if you plug in a wall, it takes probably 18 hours. If you upgrade it to a 220-volt charger, about six hours. These are different cars. Top-left was at the auto show, the Active E Series. BMW did a test last year with about 400 vehicles. Went so well, they came out with several models. The bottom-left is a Tesla, and these other two cars might... Go on. We have a program, Mr. Mayor, if you want, we will subsidize half. If you want to put in some charging stations, we will pay half the cost, and we still got money left over in our funds. Go on. This is your involvement. You've done a lot. I think you're the highest city that's actually availed yourself of all these funds. So look at the Clean Fuels Program, the school bus. We give about $140,000 for every school bus. We'll help you convert over, and we'll even pay for the infrastructure, putting in a CNG station, Mr. Mayor. Prop B, Carl Moyer. Look at the dry cleaning program. You had nine companies avail themselves. We give a $5,000 grant to convert to cleaner burning equipment. And Tree Grant, you got a good one for $26,000, a couple years ago. And numbers, if you've got any concerns, we have a small business hotline to help, you know, small businesses operate, deal with registration. We'll work with them, come out and visit them. Deborah Ashby at the bottom, if you have any questions. We have social media, Twitter, Facebook, and that's it, Mr. Mayor. Any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Do we have any questions of Mike? Councilmember Mayor, I don't know your current title.
We rotate there again.
Sir, I understand. Do we have any questions of him? We want to thank you, Mike. I know you do a great job representing all the cities. You're one of our appointment to the AQMD that all the cities vote on at LA City Selection Committee, so thank you very much for your service. For our city, and Debbie, thank you very much, Deborah, for what you do for us. I know we just did the trade-in for the lawnmowers recently, so thank you for all your different programs, and thank you for your presentation, and good luck on your other item.
Dave, Mr. Mayor.
We drop down to oral communications. George Ogden and John Shoemaker on deck. George Ogden.
Evening, members of the council and staff. I was actually going to talk on Steve's topic here. However, it's going to be held over, so I'm just going to basically touch base on it. I did leave some, actually, one page of some information for you in regards to this, and hopefully, things will work out for the commissioners and the commissioners here in the city. I'd like for you, I'm sure you're going to weigh all the opportunities of what is it going to evaluate and what you're getting the bang for the buck for what you get. And in my case here, I kind of look at the $42.02 that I get on my check, and then I took and realized that I put $42 in the gas tank, and I figured I'd come up here and give you my 2 cents. So as your community services commissioner, I have to say it's an honor to serve the commission as a commissioner and city council, as well as the staff, and having the opportunity to assist the city in that manner. And, you know, hopefully, that things will work out better for the city and that you might be able to retain as much as you can in the way the commissions and the commissioners. I think it's a very valuable asset for the city. And one thing that I'm kind of going to just toss out here, I believe that we are considered employees, and I believe at the end of their physical year, that is a tax-deductible entity for the city. Is it a write-off for the commissioners? I don't know this, but I could probably research it and take a look at it. No, we're just out there. Anyway, I want to thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you very much, George. John Shoemaker, John, and Beverly on deck. Beverly?
You know, I remember a time when there were two new council members, one a little bit newer than the other, who would take on big business in the city, rallied against the coercion, the intimidation tactics, and the threats of lawsuits when people got up here and spoke. Today, these two sit quietly by as big business, again, does the exact same thing. The difference, this big business supports these two. What has happened when those in power sit idly by, not caring about the public, the public rebels. That's how these two came to power, by the public rebelling, and it may be the way they'll lose power with the public rebelling. To allow a vendor in our city to threaten the customer, namely, our citizens, is unforgivable, especially when that customer is trying to root out wrongs possibly committed by that vendor or their representatives to another community member who happens now to sit on our council. Instead of not accepting this, all sit by, saying nothing about them, no matter how truthful or correct, all we'll get is whining and complaining, which we'll start by them shortly when I quit talking. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Beverly and Herb Redholtz, next.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and staff. On behalf of West Covina Beautiful, I would like to extend an invitation to the council and staff and the audience to attend West Covina's 89th birthday event on this Thursday, on Thursday evening, February 23rd. It's the South Hills Country Club in West Covina. We will be awarding property beautification awards to two residential and two non-residential properties, one of which is the revitalization of Cameron Avenue at the side of the South Hills High School, and the other is McIntyre Square at Citrus and the 10 freeway. Many of you have received invitations. Others can speak to me later for more information. You all should have had an invitation addressed to you. And I would also like to add that I'm still opposed to the rezoning of the Civic Center area and the medical building project that you're planning to build here, and that I wish there was some way you could reconsider it or get out of it. And this was really interesting with the air quality speech tonight. I didn't know that we were still really high in bad air. Here we have the freeway out here. They're not going to stop that freeway when cutting right through West Covina, but you have a wonderful area of buffer out here, and you're going to eliminate it for this whole Civic Center area. So it's interesting. Thank you.
Thank you, Beverly. Herb Redholtz and Irene Fleck on deck. Herb?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I'm up here tonight on consent calendar item number six, which is the staff's recommendation to eliminate the Fourth of July celebration in the city. First of all, I have to express my disappointment with the staff's decision to put this on the consent calendar, because as we all know, consent calendar items are supposed to be routine in nature, and in my view, the idea of suggesting to eliminate this time-honored West Covina family tradition is anything but routine. So I would first suggest to you that you remove it from the consent calendar for separate action and discussion, hear the staff report, and I would strongly urge you to seek out some other methods to fund this event, either through soliciting sponsorships or looking for some other type of resource to keep this thing going, because we all look forward to it every year, and I would hate to see it end, and I think it's one event that brings us all together that we all enjoy. So I would pull it off, perhaps to continue it in a search for funding revenues to keep this thing alive, because we all like it. Thank you.
Thank you, Herb. Irene Fleck and Sandra Taylor's our last speaker for the night. Sandra? On deck, I should say.
Good evening. Let me do my fun part first, the library. I wanted to call your attention to not only all the wonderful things we have going, but we're really doing some fun things with teens, and teens are our future active citizens. And just one of the things that we're going to do on the ninth is they're doing duct tape roses and candy coffins. And this is an indication of the creativity both by the staff and by our participants. And the next thing, the following Thursday, the 16th, is Max and Rubens are going to do a cartooning workshop, and these are always really, really popular. The kids love it. But something that's really important to all of us, I think, on the following Thursday, on the 23rd, it's a meeting from 4:00 to 7:00, and it's paying for college. And I think this is something that's great value to our students and also to our parents, because of all times, we really need all the help we can get. Okay, part two. I'm really angered by all of this wonderful presentation and the fact that I don't think we do enough to do our part in keeping our air clean. I, too, as Beverly, I thought we were doing much better. I'm really concerned, first, there are many concerns that keep coming up about the proposed medical condos. And in addition to my previous questions and concern about the easement being awarded to Ms. Lee, the developer of the condos, for the use of the parking lot rather than the stated lease, and perhaps there's no payment coming in for this, I'm also concerned about the landfill diversion. Not only do we have a problem with landfill diversion, and the city is very proud of the fact that we did more than 50 percent diversion, and I thought that that was really great, but I'm really concerned about the potential diversion of the materials that would be coming out of our stuff over here. Not only does the transportation have to be mitigated in order to be approved by Squamid, because there will be sufficient knocks from the trucks going from here to Azusa, and the only way they permit it to be mitigated is because it's within 10 miles. Something is really, really wrong with that. But even more about the landfill diversion, my concern is, the city of West Covina is very proud of the fact, and I am too, that we have done more than 50 percent. However, what's going to happen when we have demolition materials? It's more than 20,000 cubic yards of soil, more than 1,300 tons of asphalt and concrete. But if the work is done as the geotechnical consultants recommend, it's removing soils to four feet below the surface and also five feet beyond the building. That's an awful lot of stuff that has to be diverted. I can't see how the city can go along with this sort of thing when it's going to affect things that we support or we say we do. Is this material going to be charged against the city of West Covina? I really, really would like to know about this. I think that the idea that we can improve our air, as you can tell, I'm angry from... I'm pleased with what you people said and what you're doing, but the fact that I think that we're so inconsistent, you know, we cheer ourselves, and I cheer with you, that we really divert 50 percent, but I can't cheer with you when we're going to take down a barrier that already helps our air, and you've said that it's not good. How we can take down something that is improving our environment and our health and not only take it away, we are causing a huge amount of knocks in the air and other things, plus filling landfills with stuff that shouldn't be there. Thank you.
Thank you, Irene.
Good evening. To the Honorable Mayor, Councilwoman, Councilperson, sorry. I'm here to speak on behalf of item six, the cancellation of the 2012 City of West Covina Fourth of July celebration. Actually, Herb spoke very well about that, but my concern is this, there aren't too many activities or, and/or events within this city which will allow families to participate at relatively no cost. I believe last year, or maybe the year before last, it was decided that a fee of $1 would be charged. And I also believe that Dr. Tennant, Forrest Tennant, said, "No, I will pay the $1 for each entrance." So my question is, are the costs involved, do they outweigh the benefits of the event? Have you given any consideration to possibly, rather than going three days, maybe going two days? What about the possibility of using more volunteers rather than city staff? This is something that families basically enjoy. We can go out and enjoy it, have a great time, and you don't have to really spend any money. And I think it would be a real shame if you did cancel this, because this event raises funds for MDA, and it has been really beneficial to that organization. I've participated in the Labor Day telethon. I've attended the Christmas party that is given to the recipients of the MDA, and if you've never been, I would strongly recommend that you attend one of those parties, because the kids are very grateful. And now, as president of the Women's Club of West Covina, we support that organization as well. And so I would just ask you to reconsider canceling this, and maybe we can discuss it further and come up with a more viable plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's our last speaker. Councilmember Herford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I'm somewhat pleased that we're talking a little bit about the environmental condition of the city of West Covina. For those of you that have lived in the city a long time, I go back 22 years on the council, and the big issue in the early '90s was the BKK landfill. If you don't know, BKK landfill took Class I waste, which was the most toxic kind of waste you could take for years. Agent orange, all kinds of liquids and toxic solids were dumped up there, along with normal trash and another portion of the landfill. That was closed in 1996. I was on the council, so was Councilmember Tui. Since that time, as what we consider environmental stewards of the city, we focused on areas that we could improve our park system. We built Ridge Riders Maverick Field, which was owned previously by a water company, Valencia Heights Water Company. We actually bought that property for 1.5 million, built it into a state-of-the-art major league baseball facility where players compete, and actually, they've awarded $23 million in scholarships to players that have come out of there. The Ridge Riders facility was a horse property that, when we took over, we improved, and it's a nice landscaped area with trees and beautiful setting. We also built Heritage Park, which is the park over on Cameron, a nice area. We preserved all the oak trees there and put in a nice grass area with some trees, and re-improved the heritage house over there. We actually moved a piece of home over to that piece of property. We also acquired Hearst Ranch from Joe Hearst and preserved the historical portion of that facility, which could have gone towards housing or something else had the city not stepped in. We also built Big League Dreams, which is a 50-acre park that the city of West Covina owns, which is a beautiful facility, won over 13 awards nationally for the city of West Covina. We also built Shadow Oak Park, which was a park that sat vacant or dirt lot for many years, and this council stepped up and approved the construction of that park. We also built Aroma Parquet, which is a little park in the middle of our city by Galster Park, which was a tremendous success. Just in the past year, we've been named the most business-friendly city in Los Angeles County, beating now Glendale, Burbank, Gardenia, some of the other large cities, and we're very proud of that record. We were also declared the first platinum city as far as energy efficiency in the state of California or in Southern California, Edison Territory. Achieving that level against every other city in their territory is quite an achievement. And tonight, we hear that the AQMD says that we do more than any other city, which we feel very proud of. So I... Somebody told me that... So I, somebody told me the other day, they said, you know, "When you're on the council, you're going to make decisions that people aren't going to agree with. You're going to not be 100%. You're going to hit some home runs, you're going to hit some triples. You may strike out every so often, but in the long run, judge me and my colleagues on our batting average," which, when I list all these things, I think, you know, that's pretty good average. So anyway, I think with that said, I just want to give some commentary on the discussion.
Councilwoman Sanderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to ask a question of staff briefly about a resident bringing up some soil and asphalt removal. I'm not really familiar with the project. I guess that'd be maybe a question for Mr. Yahtzee. Many times I'm aware, as my husband and I are in the construction field, that those type of materials can be recycled. I know asphalt, as well as soil, can be reutilized. Is that the case in this circumstance? Do you know?
They can, and the city does have an ordinance that encourages recycling of construction and demolition materials, and we also give each building applicant a long list of places where those materials can be taken.
Right, because I know, interesting, we went over the weekend to recycling. We had a lot of aluminum came off of a job, and it was really a neat process that they had. You drive in with your trailer, and they weigh you, and then you go and you unload your aluminum, and then you go back and you weigh again, or if you have steel. And I think, you know, I'm glad, thank you for coming, by the way. Really appreciate all you do for the AQMD and for our community. I think this is, you know, I remember as a kid going in, we had to go in the classroom because of smog alerts. I mean, I think you all remember that. That was, that was pretty substantial, and I think we've actually come a long way. I know we obviously have a lot more to go, and I think, I love the ideas of the electric cars and whatnot to try and, you know, keep an eye on that. So thank you for coming, but I just wanted to make sure that I think a lot of people are doing recycling. We have our trash hauling company that does a lot of recycling, and, you know, we are on top of it and look for new ways and appreciate people bringing in more ideas and ways that we can continue to make our environment a better place. So with that, I just want to make sure to let the resident know that I believe, and maybe Shannon, if we can make sure to see if that, the project is recycling the soils and whatnot. So, thanks.
Any other questions? Just to answer some of your questions on the diversion and everything of the landfill waste, you said 50%. We're one of the highest cities around that has diverting our trash from landfills. We met our goal. We are one of the very, I was in Sacramento and got there, where we're one of the very few cities that actually met the goal by the time required to. They let all the other cities slide, even though we put in programs to institute, like Murphying our trash, which got us to that, okay? But we were also attacked for Murphying our trash because it does cost more, the system we use, but we have one of the highest diversion rates around in the state. AB 341, I believe, is the correct assembly bill. Starting July 1st, commercial buildings and apartment complexes have to have a separate bin to do sort, to sort their trash and recycling. Because of our system, none of our businesses have to because we've already done that. We did it 10 years before that bill even was voted on. So I understand sometimes we talk about it. When you talk about the dirt, that's a state law since that's called undocumented fill. So people that put the dirt there didn't compact it correctly. So even when Caltrans disturbs that dirt, like they will when they do their sidewalk as required by law, they have to dig down and compact it properly since it was undocumented fill. That's state law. Otherwise, if you build a sidewalk retaining wall, anything on undocumented fill, it could collapse. You have to go down, recompact it, and you have to go down deeper than you're going, and you'll see the trucks out there, and you see the trucks, they move all the dirt. I mean, I work in this industry. You move all the dirt, you water it down, then you put the dirt back in the hole, run it over, water it down, and you would lose 20% of the dirt that you initially had because of compaction. So the dirt will pretty much stay on site. I understand what the report's saying, the things, but I'm saying what it's actually done. If you look at other projects, normally they grind the asphalt and rock and use it back as base for the new parks, the new parking lots that are being built there. I'm just talking about the project. Whether they do it or not, it goes to site, if it doesn't get used there, it goes to our recycling facilities, which does divert almost 100% of the construction material. Athens will divert it all and recycle most of it. Our trash, when your trash gets picked up at your home, no matter what can it is, the black can, we don't have the gray can, there's a reason why, but I'm saying, there are 32 recyclables in trash. While most people only sort aluminum, plastic, newspaper, and maybe cardboard, there's 28 other ones that the human, you know, our citizen doesn't consider recycling, but it is recycling. And Athens has 300 people that pick through all the trash, sort it all, and I know South Pasadena and us have the same trash hauler, so it's no question it's known about. They sort through all the trash and get a lot of other recyclables that we didn't consider. So even though you're getting 100% of your trash picked up at your home, only 30% of the trash is actually getting dumped at the landfill. The rest is being recycled, and we're one of the very few cities, most Athens cities have the highest diversion rates in Los Angeles County because of some of the things we've done. Our biggest problem when it comes to diversion is we have people, when you go to a landfill, if you just tell them you're from West Covina or that's where the truck's from, that goes against us. We have 20,000 tons of renegade trash that goes through the gates at Pointe Hills Landfill where people said they're from West Covina, but they, they're not using an approved hauler that has recycling requirements in West Covina. The Westfield Mall, they have cardboard people, they're allowed to use outside of Athens, but we get credit and slips for that. We have carpet recycling, which is now state law, that you can't throw away carpet, and you're supposed to recycle it, and we have people that do that recycling. We have an e-waste contractor, Mission Recycling, which takes care of that portion of it, and we do our waste, our paint roundups we do with the sanitation district. But I mean, there's a lot of things we're doing on top of what AQMD doing, and you'll see almost every category. We just got the platinum sponsor, the platinum award for the largest, and Mike was at that award. We're the first city to become platinum in the state for energy diversion, and that is also carbon footprint elimination because of what we're doing, whether we get credit for it all the time. We're having, I believe, a luncheon on April 26th for what we've done to eliminate how many millions of kilowatt-hours not being used in our city due to our diversion and our residential components. So I think we've done a lot there. The other comments on the July 4th, I don't disagree whether staff does, it wasn't my recommendation either. Again, staff gets their input on the agenda. We may disagree with it. So even though they put it, you know, on the consent calendar and/or said eliminate it, that doesn't mean we agree with them. So, I mean, that item is going to be coming up shortly, so I just wanted to clarify some of those issues. It is different, and you'll see anytime they build a home, regardless, I know some of the people that disagree with me shake their head, that's not true, but they have to dig down and move the dirt and water it down and recompact it. And even though the dirt was there and fine when a building was on it, once you remove that building, you need to recompact it and make sure you, so you don't have slippage, you don't have sinkage. That does happen in construction. Thank you. Consent calendar, is there any item on the consent calendar? Councilmember Sanderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull item six for additional discussion.
No problem.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item five. I'll make a motion to approve all the rest of the items.
Are we going to have a verbal update on the budget, or just wait for, or carry, are we doing that on Monday?
Probably do that on Monday, right?
Okay, no problem. Any other items to be pulled, sir? Okay, we have item five and six to be pulled.
I made a motion for approving the rest of the consent calendar.
And I'll second it.
Moved by Herford, second by Sanderson. I'll accept item five and six. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Herford?
Aye.
Sanderson?
Aye.
Sykes?
Aye.
Tui?
Aye. That's his 401. We go down to item number five, the next item, video webcasting at city council meetings. Councilman Herford, I believe you pulled that item.
Yeah, can we get a brief staff report on that?
Can we? Tom? Deputy City Manager Chris Freeland will present on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. As you're familiar, in 2010, the city of West Covina authorized purchase of the Sire Technologies Audio and Minutes Plus system. This system was designed to optimally work in tandem with the city clerk's electronic agenda process by uploading the entire city agenda onto our website. This system also provides the current live audio of the city council meetings and the recorded audio on our city's website. The cost for this, the annual, excuse me, the cost for the annual maintenance of the current system is $11,200. That had been shared both 50% with the redevelopment agency and the city council. As you know, with the elimination of redevelopment, the city's general fund will need to absorb this additional $5,300 burden to maintain just our current system. A few weeks ago, the city council requested staff look into opportunities to add video coverage of the meetings of the website, so just the city council portion onto our city website. And to do so, by providing a fixed camera that would show the council, the council chambers, and the city staff. To upgrade that system, just the capital cost is estimated to be about $13,000, okay? Plus, there'd be an additional $600 in annual maintenance just for that current system. The $13,000 could be utilized, we could use PEG funds to deal with capital costs, so there'd be an additional $600 in general fund costs added to that original $11,200 that I just mentioned. Okay, and again, that's just to provide video of the current meetings that we have now. City council also asked us to look at the associated cost to do both the planning commission and city council meetings, both audio and video. City staff contacted Sire Technologies to get an estimate of an additional cost add both the audio and video portion for planning commission meetings. Now, since the city clerk's council agenda process is separate than that for the planning commission, and the systems would be separate as well, Sire System says there would be a cost of about $30,000 in capital costs, which includes the upgrade to the city council system plus a brand-new system for the planning. Now, when I say brand-new system, it's not additional equipment above and beyond just what we're doing for the city council. It's because we have to buy new computers, new software programming for the planning commission to operate independently of the city clerk's office, since our city clerk office does not run those planning commission meetings. And that system has an additional annual maintenance of only $1,250. Again, that's for airing planning and city council meetings on just the city's website. City staff also asked...
Chris, I just want to clarify, you said 1,250, is it 12,000 or is it 1,000?
It's 1,000 for the annual maintenance on top of, excuse me, for the correction, on top of the $11,200 already that we're paying. So it'll be $12,450. City council also asked city staff to look at the possibility of airing council meetings back on charter communications. As you all may recall, previously, the city was spending about $180,000 for that operation. That included two production assistants and a contract with Mount San Antonio College. Now, that was for the operation of WCCT for a period of 24 hours throughout the day, so there was other programming that was being done. And that Mount SAC contract for that full year is about $58,000 as well. To follow up with the council's request, city staff met with Mount San Antonio College, and the reason we met with them is they have provided the technology here in the council chambers as well as maintained our system. They estimate that it'll be about $10,000 in capital cost just to upgrade the system in the back control room, just in order for us to get a video signal that we can then send out to charter communications to air out in the community. And the reason we have Mount SAC involved as well is, as you may recall, is the video system is actually submitted and transmitted from Mount San Antonio College. The video signal comes in from the camera, or cameras here in the council chambers, into our back room, and then it's sent to Mount San Antonio College because Charter's main line hub is over at the university. It would, if we were to bring that here, we, city staff estimated it'd be about a quarter million dollars to build a control room, which is the same as would be over at Mount San Antonio College, plus whatever cost charter communications would charge to relocate that line here to City Hall. There was a comment at the same council meeting of a member of the public saying, "Well, I have family members work for the city of Signal Hill, and I know that their city gets cable for free." City staff contacted the city of Signal Hill, and as staff has shared with you in the past, we are receiving it free with Charter as well, but with the deregulation of the cable industry a couple of years ago, charter communication now encourages, or has a fee for cities. So in actuality, the city of Signal Hill is spending about a little over $8,000 a year just to transmit their signal on charter communications. And in addition, they're also providing a staff employee at their city to operate that system, which is, I mean, if we were to do this similar situation of planning and council meetings, it's about $8,000 to $9,000 in just staff cost to provide that service. So if we were to, once again, go back to cable television, it's important that you first have to do the upgrades to the city clerk's agenda system to move that from audio to video. Whether or not you want to add planning commission or city council, that's another option for the city council. But then if you do want to go to charter cable, again, you have to upgrade the city clerk's position first, and then the control room in the back here, plus then you have an annual maintenance or service either from Mount San Antonio College and a fee to charter cable to air the PEG channel. So in the staff report, it says that to provide the total cost for council and planning commissions is about $40,000 in PEG funds for capital cost. And then there's an additional ongoing maintenance, or excuse me, and ongoing annual maintenance of about $29,130, which would be general fund dollars in order to maintain our current system, plus add all the additional items that staff presented.
I just want to make sure, but you're still on the bottom when number four on the charter one, that's only sending a television signal to 80, to 12% of our community.
You know, that's actually...
The other 88% will not get that.
That's correct, because as of right now, it's not available on Verizon, DirecTV, Dish Network, or any of the other providers here in the community.
So that cost would only be for charter subscribers only. The other 88% would have to use the website, which, the website's available to all 100% of the residents, obviously, if they have internet service.
That's correct.
Okay.
The recommendation that covers the planning commission and the council on the Sire system, which number would that be?
I believe three.
Okay, so general fund would be impacted, right now it's 5,300, 5,800, so about another 6,000. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Steve?
If we go with item recommendation number three, it would increase the general fund cost by another $6,000 to televise using the Sire system. Is that correct?
Actually, there will be a cost of $3,000 in PEG funds and an increase of the current of $1,250, but again, it is 6,000 because with the elimination of redevelopment agencies, the city's now being required to make up that additional cost. So you're correct in saying it'll be a $6,500 burden to the city because of the elimination of redevelopment agencies.
But you're only talking about the increase. The total cost either way of the general fund is $12,450 for both doing planning and city council meetings on our Sire system.
That's correct.
Okay. I favor that item, number three. I think that's what we talked about during the election, and a lot of residents felt that that was a good system, and I do know, I talked to a lot of people that do listen to us, so I think the video for the expenditure is well worth it.
Councilmember Sanderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to ask Chris, because I know that you're up to date on a lot of different things, and I understand that there's a House Resolution 1746, and that would allow the use of the PEG funds, and I believe that's in committee at this time. Do you have any information on that and helps to subsidize it?
Sure, just for the public's knowledge, once again, I'll go back and give a brief introduction of PEG funds. PEG funds is a fee that was collected previously by the city for what was called public education or government channels. It was a small fee that was on your cable television bill. Those funds would go to help support the city council, or, excuse me, the PEG programming that we did here in the city of West Covina. The city council, when we suspended the operations of the WCCT, also suspended the PEG fee itself. So that way taxpayers in the community were not paying this fee and not receiving a service. The current piece of legislation in the U.S. House of Representatives is allowing, is proposing to allow PEG funding to be utilized for both capital expenses and personnel costs. Current law says you can only use the PEG funding for capital costs. So if you want to buy new cameras, new televisions... So if we want to buy new cameras, new televisions, monitors in here, we can use the PEG funding for that. But we can't pay salaries for people with that fund as of right now. With the new legislation in Washington, D.C., which the city council has taken a position to support, as well as League of California Cities, we're hopeful that if that does change, that could free up additional funding for the city.
Do you have any idea when that might be happening?
We don't. It is in the middle of committee back in Washington, D.C., and we're just hopeful that it can get out of committee. You never know what's happened in Washington, D.C. recently, though.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, thank you for that. Also, too, I wanted to find out if there was any kind of mobile application to this.
Right now, mobile phones have the ability to go ahead and access our city's website, and from the city's website.
It's only be through the website itself.
You could, just like you do with your laptop or people do with iPhones or iPads, you would have the same access. And I know that the city is in the process of finalizing the development of our own mobile phone application to repeat report like graffiti, potholes in the community, things like that. So that's another way we're trying to bring technology into our community.
Okay, so basically, what we're looking at is, at this point, we have no other option but using general funds to get this up and rolling, is that kind of what I'm hearing?
Correct. The PEG funds for the capital cost, the general fund for the ongoing maintenance, and for any staff needs that we may have.
So, and we can keep an eye on that House Resolution at this point?
Oh, absolutely. We're very hopeful, because that's, we have a couple hundred thousand dollars of PEG fees that we need to utilize.
Right, and that's what I want to, you know, right now, you know, we're facing tough economics situation, and spending money is, I understand the need and the people wanting to have that access, and I actually think it's beneficial to us. I, I do miss it. I, I know I have a lot of people that miss it and have talked to me, but sometimes, you know, we have to consider the costs of things, and I appreciate you bringing all the different ideas and forward, and I wish we had some kind of a timeframe on whether we could be able to utilize some of those PEG funds. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments by councilmembers? Councilmember Fred Sykes?
I just simply like to say that since 2008, June, I opposed the termination of what we had at that time, and we were in a better place than we are at this moment. And just looking at the bottom line, I have to agree with where Councilmember Herbert, Hereford is coming from. It will give us a modicum of improvement, and I would rather go with a complete restoration of what we originally had, but the facts are clear, we just can't afford it. So I'm in favor of what we're offering here tonight regarding the Cyra program and bringing the planning commission on board, where we do not have that at this time. Thank you.
I too agree with, with what everyone said here today. The one difference I would have on the charter one, we have to be very careful that 88% of the taxpayers, if you use general fund, will be subsidizing 12% of the people that use charter communications. That's just a matter of fact, based on number, service numbers, and the cable people honestly are going down. Most people have some other type, whether it's Vios, AT&amp;T, Dish Net, DirecTV, there's so many different forms of media, and to me, this is the largest one. Fund 205, the charter PEG fund, at the end of this year, I believe we'll have approximately $364,000 in it, and that's something that Congresswoman Judy Chu is working to, but either way, to continue that funding source, because you have to be careful, once you start using it, it would take a vote of the city council again to reinstitute that bill of approximately $2 to $3 a month back on people that pay charter, and I'm not sure where the public will be on that. I've seen what it was when we were raising, I believe, street sweeping fees, 18 cents a month would happen. So I'm cognizant of, everyone's at different places financially, and to me, everyone's going to be upset no matter what you do, because it is tough out there right now. But I clearly think what everyone's proposing going to item three will get the largest amount of residents capable, if they want to view it, the audience, and I will support that. Can I have a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve item three.
I second it. Moved in second, Councilwoman Sanderson.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment briefly before the vote, that I would support item two because it's a lesser cost. I think for now, until we get answers on the House resolution, so I would like to support this and support item two, so if it, you guys basically are supporting item number three, correct?
Three, it's for 650 more dollars annually.
Yeah, for the maintenance, but it's a higher cost for
The PEG.
The upgrades. Okay, so it's actually a higher cost for PEG funds.
Correct.
All right. Well, I guess, okay, thanks.
It's 17 more thousand on PEG funds and 650 more annually. I have a motion by Hereford, second by Sykes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, 401. Sorry about that, Alfred. I don't know what that does to your.
Good job. You're fired.
Right, really, you got your pink slip. General fund subsidy of the Fourth of July celebration, who, which, Councilwoman Sanderson pulled it off? Councilwoman Sanderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to maybe discuss some options, because I agree with the speakers that came up forward this evening, that this has been a wonderful thing for our community. I go every year, I take my family and my neighbors, and it's just an amazing, amazing event, and we have a great group of people that put this on, and I just would hate to see it go. I understand the, given the economic situation, and was hoping that we could come up with some solutions and ideas, possibly volunteer policing, you know, I just kind of was thinking of all different types of ideas this afternoon, how we could, and make this work, and so I just wanted some discussion on that. And then there was a speaker that said something about somebody paying the dollar, did that happen?
Yes.
Really? Okay, that's, well, maybe we could do more of that then, and that's maybe where I'm, you know, like the Roosevelt Foundation had, had, had done, you know, just looking for ideas and hopes I can come up with some as well. Thanks.
Any other, Councilmember Hereford?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In 1990, I believe, the city of West Covina banned fireworks, Safe and Same fireworks in our neighborhoods. For a few years, we really did nothing on the Fourth of July, and then the Elks Lodge did what we called a chili cook-off fundraiser type thing, and we all participated in that. And I think it was about 1993 or '94, we merged the two events, and we brought in the fireworks, and we've had a successful event since. The, one of the reasons for going to a fireworks show, obviously, is the safe, safeness of it, and the fact that we don't want people's roofs burning down, we don't want kids getting hurt with the Safe and Same fireworks. That's what the voters who voted to ban Safe and Same in the city essentially wanted. So I think this has been a great success, and all the years we've done it, I can't remember any problems that we've had. The police costs are funded through a grant, which brings the cost down to about 46,000. I think there's, can be some reductions in costs by possibly either soliciting a ban to play for free or not putting on a big stage, or, you know, maybe not focus so much on the music portion of it, but I do, you know, 15,000 to 20,000 people that participate and come out, and it's a family event, so if I'm going to allocate general funds to any recreation event in the city of West Covina, it's going to be this one. So I would make a recommendation to authorize the 2012 Fourth of July celebration.
I would second that.
Moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, pass is 401.
I know, is there a way, maybe we can create some type of, you know, business outreach to see if we can help subsidize the costs? I mean, I don't know if we want to make that
Yeah, I think.
An additional motion, or?
Yeah. I think that would be something, maybe staff could come back with some recommendations, maybe at the budget meeting.
Yeah, that would be a good, a good time. All right.
Redevelopment, elimination budget meeting.
No problem. That will be brought back during that budget meeting. Yeah, thank you, Tom. And Andy's joined us. I know it's different seeing you, Andy, in the second row.
Andy, you look shorter, I don't know why. What's the deal?
He doesn't look that tough back there. Okay, item number nine, the review of the cost-saving opportunities on city commissions was moved to our budget redevelopment meeting on Monday. AB 1234 reports, is there anyone that needs to give a report? Hearing councilmember comments or requests for studies, anything? I just want to make sure and tell our budget meeting that we go ahead and really look at freezing all of the travel accounts everywhere, any type of expenditures, because I believe this is going to be a very, a very disheartening budget meeting, where people, even though we vote and spend some, you know, money, people are going to potentially be losing their jobs here, so I want to make sure we freeze all the travels from, for everybody right now, so we can get a word on this. Councilmember Hereford?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to reiterate what I said earlier, it's not a budget meeting. I mean, it's the elimination of a redevelopment agency, and thus, we will see $1.9 million in subsidized salaries from the redevelopment agency disappear, so I want to make sure that the public understands that we're not just cutting people because the city is in financial distress, so.
And that's also, there's still a question of approximately $3.8 million that the, the Supreme Court is considering whether that will be eliminated also. That has not been ruled on yet. They wouldn't grant stay, but they will consider those items at a later hearing of the money that West Covina is entitled to. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make sure one thing, because in your, in item number eight, the AB 1234 reports, there was a report that was filed on behalf of Councilmember Sykes that needs to be received and filed.
I thought that was under consent calendar.
Okay.
See, I think Andy makes Arnold better, he's just being in the back.
Thank you.
We, we have a number of adjournments. Is there anyone else needing to make adjournments before we start? Tonight, I would like to adjourn our meeting in memory of former United States Congress member and former West Covina councilmember and mayor Jim Lloyd. He served on the city council from 1968 to 1975, and from Congress from 1976 to 1981. It appears that he had, possibly had a stroke and drove off the road while he was visiting his grandson in Florida. And also, former resident Steve Appleton, who was, died in an airplane crash. Mr. Appleton was the CEO of Idaho-based computer microchip company. He was raised here in West Covina, Micron, which is one of the world's largest microchip business. And our thoughts and prayers go out to both of our former residents who passed away, and they will sorely be missed if we can send our condolences to the families. Can I have a motion to?
Some.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned, thank you very much. Thank you, Mike Depper.